Thank you.
Great that we are recording. So, good afternoon, good evening, good morning, everyone. Happy May already. I don't know how that happened. We are super excited and super grateful as well for having such a flexible group of speakers who replied to very last minute requests. So welcoming Yanis, Jose and Gwen, and when it's in Jose, we're for OCHA and one with IFRC. And so today we're talking about the anticipatory action work and how this is being regeared can be regeared for public health emergency. Well, also create a space of at the end to talk about what that actually means and what that has looked like as well for integrated outbreak, of course. So handing the handing the floor up Yanis, I think we're starting with you, yes?
Sounds good. And just give me one second to share my screen. Can you see the slides Simone?
Yeah, it's perfect.
Perfect, awesome, cool. So yeah, hi, everyone. First of all, thank you so much for having us. It's such a pleasure to be with you and be able to talk about anticipatory action in general. And to share our experience with these outbreaks and with cholera and the DRC in particular. As you know, the humanitarian system has been working on making humanitarian assistance much more anticipatory. And to date, most projects have focused on climate or weather related shocks. And there have not been that many initiatives on diseases. And so we really appreciate the opportunity to, yes, share some of our thinking, some of our lessons with the group. And maybe get some feedback. And of course, we've been working very closely with Simone and her team. On learning from particularly our caller experience in the DRC. Yeah, so thanks so much for having us. I will briefly talk about anticipatory action in general. And just so that we're on the same page before then handing over to Gwen to talk more broadly, or more specifically rather, about how AA applies to to health. So anticipatory action is typically defined as getting ahead of predicted hazards to prevent or mitigate the acute impacts of those hazards before they can fully unfold. And and this how this relates to diseases. It's still so that definitions, they're not quite clear. What we're not exactly trying to predict this. The first case, this seems to be still quite challenging, but we'd rather try to predict sort of a peak or a large outbreak of infectious disease. And the idea behind anticipatory action is really that by coming in earlier. And we're able to reduce the humanitarian impact and associated costs. We're able to provide humanitarian assistance in a much more dignified way. And at the same time, sort of protect protecting hard-won development gains by reducing the overall impact of a shock. And so when conceptualizing anticipatory action. And it helps to first look at what a traditional response looks like. As you know, whenever there's a crisis, that's when the clock starts ticking. And from needs assessments, we have plan, we mobilize resources. And and so we so I work at OCHA Central Emergencies Response Fund. That's where we would normally come in, where we view projects, we approve them. And that's finally when the assistance kicks in. And the disorder action really tries to flip this around. And there are typically three elements associated with with any typical framework. The first is a forecasting and decision-making framework. Also referred to often as a trigger, which is basically a set of conditions that have to be met for a framework to be activated. The second is an established action plan with activities that can take place within the window of opportunity between when we reach a signal that a shock is imminent. And the shock actually taking place. And the third component is a pre-arranged financing mechanism. Once all these are in place and we do have the signal that a shock is imminent, we're able to to release the funding that is already pre-arranged. We're able to implement activities that have already been pre-agreed thereby reducing the lack time coming in sooner. And reducing the sort of the impact of the shock. And and for disease outbreaks in particular, which also distinguishes them from other pilots related to weather-related shocks. So we may not only be able to mitigate the the impact of the shock, but the the shock itself by changing the trajectory of the outbreak dynamic. And and one question that always comes up is or often comes up is sort of how this relates to the overall architecture of the humanitarian. Yeah, response with so we know that also disaster risk reduction, prevention, preparedness activities come in prior to a crisis. As opposed to response mechanisms and reconstruction recovery. What really sets anticipatory action apart is that it is much more linked to a concrete forecast of an imminent hazard. And which then, once the signal is reached, that's when activities really take place. Yeah, that's just a brief overview. And with that, I'll hand over to Gwen, maybe. To talk more about AA for health. Thanks.
Hey, good, I was gonna say, good morning, but good afternoon to many of you. I'm just looking to share my screen and I will be there in a moment. All right. Are you looking at something that looks vaguely promising?
Brilliant one.
Perfect. All right. Good start. And good. And are you seeing the the good version of the presenter view? Just because I can't see what I what you're seeing.
We've got the good one. You're up.
Beautiful. What a way to start the day. Okay, good. Well, good afternoon to all of you. My name is Gwen Emer. I am in the Public Health and Emergencies file with IFRC. And and I also want to make it very clear that the work here that I'm presenting is about ninety something percent the work of Rachel Gooderman, who I think many of you know, who is currently somewhere in a plane over Bangladesh. And so this is really a work that that she has led over the past sort of year and a half, two years. Trying to take these concepts that, as we've seen in the previous presentation. Really have applied very strongly to non-epidemic types of disasters, to sudden onset and meteorological related disasters. And trying to apply those concepts and the systems that we have within the IFRC and the broader Red Cross, Red Crescent network to epidemics and and broader health risks. And so when we're looking at kind of why we want to apply this concept of anticipatory action into health. And what we're looking at is having a better understanding of some of the seasonal trends and patterns of disease in endemic areas. We're looking at trying to understand trigger mechanisms that help us to decide when to begin implementing activities to have a greater impact. And we're looking to improve the efficiency of the use of our resources. And recognizing that the number of epidemics and the the number of health risks globally is much greater than the resources that we collectively have. It also gives us a point of advocacy to be able to say much earlier that we think a risk is emerging here and we think collective action, not just by ourselves, but by others, is also important. And all of this together collectively gets us towards what we hope is and believe will be lower morbidity and lower mortality from these epidemics. And what you see on the right is also just a just a good reminder, and I think we all know this, but sometimes it's good to see the visuals. And that the the demographic and geographic exposure to different health risks is changing dramatically with the climate crisis. I mean, we talk a lot about the human wildlife interface in terms of, you know, humans encroaching into nature and having more at risk of crossover events, but we also have many pathogens and many vectors that will be living happily in much bigger geographic areas than they currently do. So there's a couple of different ways to think about anticipatory action, and I think it's useful that we explore all of the meanings of this term when we think about what it means to do anticipatory action for health risks specifically. So one is as a goal. So we're aiming to reduce humanitarian impacts of potential crises. Second is as a process in and of itself. So the process that allows us to forecast, whether that is short, short-term forecasting, whether that's seasonal forecasting and looking at some of the patterns there. Whether it is risk analysis, looking at the different triggers, looking at the actions themselves, the planning processes, the contingency plans and the financing to be able to meaningfully turn that that knowledge or that anticipation of that something might happen into actual action. And finally, is that action itself? So those activities and that actually reduce the risks that we have collectively identified through those various processes that I've just named. Now, the way that we are doing this for anticipatory action as it relates to health within the IFRC and the broader network of Red Cross and Crescent societies around the world. One is looking at a threshold based on real-time Epi info. So an example there would be the emergence of a single case of cholera in a targeted context. Or in a neighboring context, triggers a response or triggers early action and the goal there being to identify very quickly that something concerning is happening. And nip it in the bud and have it, you know, prevent it from becoming something that the rest of the world begins to care about, prevent it from becoming something that has high morbidity, high mortality for the affected people and to end it very quickly. The second is really looking at weather forecasting. And how do we use this sort of same approach that we have used for many years now on, you know, typhoons and cyclones and and things like that, you know, which we currently pre-position blankets and food and we move people into shelters in anticipation of tropical storms before they hit in many countries. And how do we use the same, the same systems, the same underpinnings, the same knowledge of meteorological events to start to predict certain, certain types of health risks. So for example, you know, a forecast, if we know in an endemic Dengue area, hundred millimeters of rainfall within twenty-four hours could trigger early action for Dengue. Because we know that there is a heightened risk in the period that that follows after that. So we can take action much earlier. And then finally, we can look at thresholds that are based on Epi forecasting. So for example, we are seeing from the Epi data that we're forecasting a community prevalence of twenty percent could trigger early action for malaria instead of waiting to actually achieve some of those numbers that we don't like to see and really using it to have targeted action to to bring down those cases. And for us as Red Cross, Red Crescent, using community-based initiatives and volunteers in the affected communities to make that happen. And now, when we're looking at kind of how this fits into the broader question of integrated outbreak analytics. A lot of the data that IOA is dealing with is data that can be used to inform decision-making about early action. So we're talking about Epi data, we're talking climate and meteorological data, environmental data, and the social analysis pieces that really play into having both the trigger to understand where we are in a situation, to have the planning, to understand what then to do about that situation. And to have an idea of the actions that we can and will take and then ideally feeding those actions back into the IOA cells or IOA analyses to be able to demonstrate whether there is impact from these things and to kind of be part of that feedback loop of understanding where we are in terms of the risk, the response and and the results. And and it also helps us to identify some of the specific triggers for actions and for funding mechanisms. And so how we're doing this within Red Cross, Red Crescent, we have a working group on anticipatory action and health. And you can see here at the bottom right, there's a a link to if you something that you would like to be involved in. This is, there's a couple of different groups working on within this space, some within the Red Cross, Red Crescent. Co-chaired by the German Red Cross and the Climate Center and some with other organizations, including MSF. And and really, the goal here is to advance and consolidate the the thinking around anticipatory action for health and to bring all of these minds together. And trying to strengthen in a more systematic way, the movement's knowledge exchange, and by movement, I mean the movement of the Red Cross, Red Crescent. And our knowledge, our practices, our tools that we use to both anticipate and then prevent the negative health outcomes related to what we have anticipated. We're also trying to foster collaboration within the space, again, within the movement, but also looking outwards at at many of you who, you know, who work in this, let's say, ecosystem of early action, early warning, early action. We're also trying to build the evidence base and the kind of practice base around anticipatory action, both for health and for nutrition. With the ambition of developing early action protocols for specific health risks, which our national, one hundred and ninety-two national societies around the world can use to trigger some of our internal mechanisms for funding, for technical support, but also for advocacy and for use with other actors within their national context to flag that, hey, we're concerned about something and we think something should be done. So I'll give you the example of the cholera early action protocol template, which is what I think Rachel has spent many, many of her hours over the past year or two working on. And it's a, it felt like cholera was the lowest hanging fruit. Although I think we all know that it's not as simple. It's not simple. It just is maybe the easiest place to start when it comes to anticipatory action for health. And but what the what the goal of this emergency or pardon me, early action protocol really is is focusing in for now on understanding the risk and hazard mapping, allowing for anticipatory action, identifying what our signals are. How we detect them and what they mean. And then identifying what those kind of how those fit into the different activities that Red Cross, Red Crescent societies and volunteers around the world engage in. And then feeding those into integrated outbreak analytics for evidence-informed intervention. And there, I mean, as you can see in the image there, obviously, the goal is is to reduce the total number of cases, to flatten the curve. As was so popular to say a couple of years ago. But this is the kind of way that we're looking at it in terms of the different parts of the puzzle. Coming together for our national societies. What we're looking at in terms of the actual protocol and how we're structuring this is identifying a trigger statement. So trigger one, for example, when high-risk cholera geographic setting, what we're calling a hotspot, is paired with two of the following factors. So you must have one plus something related to a weather or environmental risk. So you have a high-risk period, a heavy rain period, seasonal trends in which you know that this context tends to see increases in cases, extreme weather events like flooding or droughts, elevated temperatures. And or population-related. So something like migration or displacement. A change in crowding that results in overcrowding, cancer, inadequate water or sanitation, it changes in nutrition status. And the idea there really is to give us time to anticipate that something has changed that may result in higher transmission, a higher burden of disease, higher mortality or morbidity. And what we're looking at for trigger one in terms of a lead time is about three months prior to the predicted high-risk period. So we're trying to get out ahead of it and give ourselves some time both to prevent and to prepare should a surge occur. When we look at trigger number two, we're looking at an immediate lead time when a confirmed cholera case is identified. So in scenario A, for example, you have a cholera case is confirmed in a neighboring district or in a bordering country. That triggers stronger surveillance and readiness at the community level and at the Red Cross, Red Crescent level in that country, in that neighboring country. Scenario B, you could have, sorry, I've just got an enormous bee that's landed on my face. And okay, scenario, sorry. Sorry, it's hard to focus with a bee on your face. Okay, it's gone now. Scenario B is looking at, you know, if you have a cholera confirmed case in in one district, triggering a rapid response within the prioritized district and rapid scale up in all of the surrounding districts. Anticipating that something much larger could happen, or trying to actually nip that in the bud and prevent it from happening in the first place. And so we're really trying to get down into concretely how we define these triggers. And what timeline these different triggers mean for us in terms of the scale of the response that it merits. And the scale of resources that would then have to come in order to facilitate those those responses. And some of the, you know, just to give you a sense of timeline and the type of work that's gone into this thinking. We started in 2021, starting discussing the need for a simplified way to do this. And these are, these are templates that we use for each of our national societies that can actually put in plans ahead of time before a crisis happens. And that makes them eligible for funding within our internal anticipatory action protocols and sources of funding. So this is a process, a planning process that national societies go through using the tools that we're helping to identify and develop. And to make them both prepared institutionally, but also to line them up to have access to funding for early action when there is not yet global funding or other types of funding coming from other actors for response for something that has not yet occurred. And in 2022, we brought together Wash, Health, and technical stakeholders, along with stakeholders from our Disaster Relief Emergency Fund and our Forecast Based Financing Teams. And collaborated to draft the initial emergency early action protocol. And in the same year, we shared that simplified protocol with a number of national societies and stakeholders for comments and suggestions. And then in this year, in 2023, we've incorporated all of that feedback and we're starting to pilot this process in a number of priority countries. So just to give you a sense of the consultation that has gone into this process. And it is by no means simple, but we do think that we're reaching something that is pretty workable. And we'll see the outcomes of that later this year. So that's it from my side. Thank you.
Yanis, we'll back over to you, yes?
Hmm, yeah. Just one second. Can you see the screen, Simone?
Yeah, perfect.
Perfect, cool. And yeah, thanks so much. And it was, yeah, really interesting to see sort of the IFRC experience on cholera. You'll see that what I'm going to talk about, which is OCHA's or the facilitated anticipatory action pilot would be in the DRC. Incorporates a lot of the similar elements, but maybe does them in a in a different way. And before I get started, I should mention that this was a truly collaborative effort and project. And most of the credit should really go to partners in the DRC, especially the country, OCHA Country Office, UNICEF, WHO, IOM government partners, including Pinnacle, the National Program in the DRC for the elimination of cholera and the control of other real diseases. And and we worked together with colleagues in OCHA headquarters to really come up with this framework or project. And which, as I mentioned, is the first OCHA facilitated AA pilot related to the disease outbreaks. Crisis scenario. And it's like all OCHA pilots are to your framework, which was endorsed by the Emergency Response Coordinator in December of 2022. And and this framework covers the entire country, both the endemic provinces in the east as well as the non-endemic provinces. And as I mentioned before, broadly, every direction framework has three buckets or elements. And then I'm going to talk about each of those very briefly in the context of the DRC. And the first one is the forecasting mechanism. And and so there are different ways or scenarios which can lead to an activation of this pilot. One is based on epidemiological indicators, the data for which are being provided by Pinnacle. And and here, each health zone is assigned as a risk level on a weekly basis. And this trigger takes into account the risk severity over time. And and also includes, as the IFRC pilots have confirmed, at least one confirmed case. And so when there's any household that is classified as a risk level three over a period of at least three weeks. And there's additionally one confirmed case, then that leads to automatic activation of the pilot. And this approach applies to both endemic as well as non-endemic provinces. And and so this again doesn't, this risk analysis is to predict larger outbreaks rather than predicting individual cases. And in addition, just like Gwen mentioned, we also tried to find a way to take into account the fact that external shocks such as displacement or floods or eruptions of volcanoes, as we saw with the Yoronggo volcano. And can also increase the risk of cholera outbreaks. And in the context of this process, we found it very challenging to to operationalize it and find a good sort of prediction model to make this link between the shock and the outbreak of cholera. So instead, we opted for a more pragmatic approach whereby whenever there's a response allocation from OCHA Central Emergency Response Fund responding to such a shock, this also automatically triggers a rapid response, a disciplinary action allocation specifically on cholera. The second element, the the action plan. And and here we we focus on the main sectors under cholera response, the Washington Health sectors. And we really did not have to ruin them when the wheel here. And given that partners in the DRC have real extensive experience dealing with cholera outbreaks. And already have systems in place that we could leverage for this project. And so on the Wash side, this mainly focuses on WHO's Cadiage and UNICEF's case area targeted intervention approaches. Which basically entails the deployment of response teams to households with suspected cases while surrounding households. And where they perform household disinfection, hygiene promotion, early detection, establish chlorination points, et cetera. On the health side, it's case management surveillance activities. And and one important element of this project is the great degree of geographical and temporal flexibility. And that's given to partners that will that allows them to basically adapt the their response to the dynamic and the trajectory of the of the outbreak. And similar activities are basically planned and implemented across the different scenarios. Or to trigger mechanisms that I explained in different provinces. The final point on the financing. And this, okay, so this pilot comes from OCHA Surf, which allocated total of three million dollars for the entire two-year duration. With seven hundred fifty thousand dollars released for each activation for a total of for activations over the two years. And so in December of 2022, as we were monitoring the situation, we noticed that in the Yoronggo Health Zone in North Kivu Province. And towards the, yeah, the last weeks. It was classified as risk level three for three weeks and more, which then led to an activation under scenario one of the pilot, which is an activation to an increased risk for a large cholera outbreak in an endemic zone based on epidemiological indicators. So in response, Surf released the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and UNICEF and WHO were able to start immediate implementation with WHO focusing their efforts on the North Kivu Province to respond to the current outbreak. As it was unfolding and UNICEF in South Kivu with their captive approach to really prevent the spread. Which is very interesting to see that it's quite similar to some of the thinking that IFRC has has made on this. And then finally, in addition to the three components that are part of every framework. Most frameworks also have a big learning element that really allows us to capture lessons and apply them to ongoing and future pilots. And the DRC, Simone, Kai and the IOA approach really form an important element of that learning agenda. And we also partnered with another researcher, Kevin Baumann, who looked at a response from a more biethical and anthropological perspective. To help us understand sort of more about maybe explanatory models of illness and health in the communities. And the pilot is still ongoing, but it's really something that has already taught us a lot of lessons. Given that these outbreaks in many ways are so different from the other types of shocks and that we're dealing with. And first, I realized sort of the the multifaceted nature of cholera and the experience in the DRC really has opened questions up about maybe protection issues that we hadn't taken into account that could also be addressed in future iterations together with Wash and Health interventions. And one final point is that we'd really like to encourage the more proactive use of epidemiological data so that we stop chasing the large outbreaks and get ahead of them. So for example, past surf allocations typically came in sort of response allocations much later after the peak of an outbreak. of an outbreak and think we really have this data and we should start leveraging that in a much more proactive way. Yeah, that's it from my side. Thanks so much. And I'll hand back to Simone, I believe.
Actually, I think I'll take over you, Anis. Thank you, Simone. I'll just wait to be able to share my screen. Hello, everyone. Thank you for the invitation, Simone. I was asked to come and present the climate data sets that we just made available at on H D X upon the humanitarian data exchange, which I'm happy to oblige and present sharing screen. I cannot do two things at once. Apologies. Here we go. And we'll be able to speak to the value we see for those data sets for anticipation and make it to anticipation for health. So hopefully you can see the screen, you, Anis, can you confirm or Simone?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, great. Thank you. So very briefly, I may not need to to mention, but we are in a climate crisis and climate shocks are really a major driver of humanitarian needs. In the past two decades, we have seen a mere doubling of disasters, which have claimed more lives and affected more lives worldwide than ever before. So what we are talking about when we talk about data, climate data specifically, are data that can inform on the characteristics of meteorological events such as the path of a typhoon or the duration of a heat wave, their impact on the ground, for example, on river water levels, but also the risk level of those climate shocks. What we've noticed at the center, and particularly through our conversations with partners within the sector, not solely at OCHA, is that there is actually little climate data that is really considered as part of the humanitarian planning and response in certain cases at least. So in a very informal survey, we about forty percent of those surveyed reported that they rarely or never use climate data in their work. For those who did, they reported that it was very difficult to do oftentimes for the top three reasons that you said, bottom of the screen, which is limited or no access to weather climate data, that the data that was provided by, say, national or regional met services were not in the right format or answering the right questions for them, or that they did not have the technical capacity to actually use any data that was out there. And that is why we, the center, decided to help with these with these hurdles so that we could really promote the use of climate data in informing the humanitarian response. Those climate were developed in a partnership with the W F P's research assessment and monitoring division, their climate and earth observation unit. So they are doing the heavy lifting in really taking data sets from global providers, pre-processing them, kind of cleaning them up and preparing them so that they are ready for analysis. And these data sets are now made available on H D X, which is a sharing data sharing platform that is open to all. For now, our focus has been on rainfall, temperature, evapotranspiration and vegetation health, which are some of the major sources of climate shocks. They cover about thirty two countries, although we are already talking about extending that geographically. In total, we're talking about over a hundred data sets that will be made available and will be updated, by the way, on a regular basis. So what does that data set potentially look like? But for example, for precipitation, we're talking about various metrics and indicators that can be used because they are already pre-computed. So the end users, say, a humanitarian affairs officer who would have a question about rainfall patterns in their area, wouldn't have to do all these computations. Simply download the data set and start looking at things like the total rainfall, the long term average in the region, deviations from the long term average, the number of wet or dry days, how much rain there was on a given day, whether there was a wet spell or a dry spell, how intense was the rain, et cetera. And I'm making a link here partly also to what you, Anis, and Gwen were mentioning in terms of looking at various climate shocks. And this is where we we start to see the link potentially to health related anticipation. So just to close up on the data sets, these data sets are making analysis easier, we hope, for colleagues in the field and beyond, in that they are in a format that anyone can download in, honestly, even open in an Excel spreadsheet. They do not require G I S or coding expertise. They are at the subnational level at M E two and use standard P code so that they can be related to geographical information. They provide twenty to forty years of history, so we can look at patterns over time as well. And as I mentioned, they will be updated every fourteen days, will be maintained up to date. You and us alluded to the fact that at surf, in particular, we are starting to look at ways to get ahead of outbreaks as well instead of only responding to them. So one of the things we are exploring at the moment is looking at epidemiological data and having a global monitoring system to have a sense for where there are outbreaks, how severe they are, how widespread and how the situation is changing over time. Eventually, where we want to go with this is one have some kind of, if not a trigger for a response, at least a flag system that would allow us to really get more eyes on a situation and evaluate if a situation is deteriorating, whether early action or anticipation would be warranted. So to Gwen's point, not necessarily having anticipatory action as a framework all the time, but kind of thinking of it as part of a process. And the second amelioration that we might be able to do is really start linking it to also specific climate shocks. So this is from a paper, twenty twenty two scientific paper that looked at those relationships. There, as you can see, there are relationships, as we know, between outbreaks and climate shocks. The level of agreement and evidence for those links varies. So we're not quite there yet in being able to fully quantify those relationships. But what we are hoping is that those climate data sets, among others, might help us eventually follow the climate conditions on the ground and again, either be able to flag that a situation is conducive to an outbreak so that potentially a response can be planned or even develop triggers for anticipation and be a little bit more specific in the way we define what is high risk. I, yes, I almost, almost stayed within my five minutes. Thank you for the opportunity to join. Happy to answer any questions. Over to you.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Great presentation. So we've got a good moment for chat and session. And it's being oh, yes, you've already responded to some of my expressions, but I'm happy. Thank you. And any other question? No question. No, haven't today. Jennifer, yeah. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Hi. Yeah, I'll I'll go if nobody else has got one. And so I'm doing some work on seeing if we can model climate change and predict disease outbreaks based on diseases where we know they have a climatic kind of trigger and where we have good climate data. But what we've been struggling with is getting epidemiological data sets that are as good as the climate change data sets over, say, ten, twenty year timeframes so that we can prove that the model, prove the model. So what we want to see is where you see a spike in certain climatic conditions, you're also likely to see a spike in the disease conditions. And so it was really kind of a question to all of you of if you've got access to some of those data sets that might be useful to us. And it would be really interesting to link up. I put a link to our projects in the chat. And at the moment, we've got some climate data from, well, we've got the, we've got the climate data is fine. It's the epidemiological data we're short of. We've got some data from Yemen that we can use for cholera. And we've got some data on Dengue from both India and Brazil, but we're really looking for very good data sets that we can run into the model.
Thanks, Jennifer. Shall I take Danielle's hand as well? And then we can pass to the to the speakers. And there are questions coming in in the chat as well. And Danielle, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the presentations. And I'm currently doing some research through five ten in the Netherlands Red Cross. And I think it's mainly a question for Mr. Kaffis is regards to the D R C work that you did and to understand if the early actions that you're doing, an early warning system is in action and how you manage to form that collaboration where you're getting real, if you are getting real time data to be able to do the ongoing predictions. That's something that we are working on. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. So I'll pass over to Yanis and the team to answer their two questions and then we'll take a couple more.
Sure. Thank you. Great questions. And and these are indeed things that we were struggling with ourselves. And so the data that we have access to comes from directly from the Ministry of Health through through Pinnacle. And and I think credit goes really to to C H U, the Center for Humanitarian Data from OCHA that formed this relationship over time and that are now managing this the data that comes in on a regular basis. So Jose, I don't know if you agree, but I think maybe you would be probably the best person to talk to or your team to, if there is any partnership possible on data sharing. And I think that covers both questions, but Jose, please let me know.
Thank you. No, you're not, unfortunately, unfortunately, because that means we don't have data easily. Not because I wanted to be wrong. Thank you for that. Yes. Yes, we also find it very difficult to find good, complete granular and easily accessible, up to date epidemiological data. I think that's an experience that we all share. What I would add to what you said is that those relationships need to be developed ahead of time. So for us, that relationship was built as we were developing the the framework, but we had to develop also data sharing agreements and in certain cases also build tools to be able to share those data and process them in a timely manner. So my message would be to fold one, those relationships with the data owners and especially the specialists who are working locally are extremely valuable and important. And this would be the first step that we would recommend is building that relationship. And second, not to underestimate the amount of time and investment in general in not only building that relationship, but figuring out how to share the data. So there are constraints that everyone is trying to act on this information and reduce morbidity and mortality due to those diseases. But we all work within different constraints. So sometimes data sharing is not that easy at all externally. So really investing time in planning well ahead to understand and figure out a way to do this data sharing is really important. And in fact, I can confirm that it has been a major hurdle for other pilots that we were hoping to get off the ground. So definitely a big challenge there for the kind of global monitoring approach that I mentioned. We are starting to explore what we are currently doing, frankly, is through code, getting a copy of the W H O bulletin, weekly bulletins and grabbing numbers from there, which is not a great system, but is for now our starting point. So Jenny, thank you very much for also the question and mentioning we are absolutely open to collaborations and working on this. So please do get in touch. I think my information is there, but I'll reput it in the chat. So please do get in touch. And thank you very much. Back to you, I would say, Simone.
Thanks, everyone. I see that a colleague in W H O, Iden Chen, maybe if they're doing an apology.
Yes, it's a community from a special helicopter. Currently working with grown operational support team. I'm very happy just that Jennifer raised a question about the factors and the parameters in terms of the modality. The modality is, I'm also concerned about it as a outbreak of diseases. We have, we always have risk factors have been the social determinants. But I'm not sure, because this is my first time to jump this course. So for it's really, really a very impressive project, I think. I'd like to make clear from my end, the aim of the project is on early warning or early response action. So it's a participatory action. So I'm not very clear about exactly it's for early warning. Oh, it's for early response action for the potential outbreaks of diseases. This is the first question. And the second question is just following the activity. So far, you just raised the parameters from the social determinant that climate change and the parameters may be from climate, from the weather. I'm not sure if we have some colors that the model curve parameters that the mobility of the population and the characteristics of features closely related to the diseases we concern about the lack of the passenger and also transmission route as a suspected population percentage. This is in terms of the modality and also for the social determinant for the sanitary situation, hygiene situation among the populations, among the suspected suspected populations. Yeah, it's it's really, really complicated, you know, for the for the model to to have some some very concrete result for the estimation of the potential of the outbreaks. So it's really hard to do it, but I just raised my concerns about that. And sorry for that. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I had a bit of trouble hearing. And we're able to hear, sorry, maybe the internet connection for me in Congo. And I will add a second one for you guys reading it aloud. And asking if there were any plug and play or ready to go models using routines or relays that are anticipating outbreaks. Not once from the chat or models now currently in experimental stage. So I'll leave you guys with those two, three questions, you know. There was the two, hopefully, somebody heard better than me, sorry.
True. So okay, so I'll try to answer. I couldn't hear the second question. I'll try to start and then we can repeat them. So I completely agree. It is very complex, as you said. And so the trick is to find a way to make it simple, but not simplistic. And so that's why we came up with the triggers and the way we did. And so we tried to include different parameters, right? Different. So we tried to include epidemiological data as much as is possible. And I put that in the chat. So more specifically, we looked at number of suspected cases. We looked at number of deaths of mortality site. And we looked at the number of cases per population and then included the parameter that we wanted at least one confirmed case, which I think is more relevant than non endemic areas and endemic areas. And and then we also tried to include sort of these external shocks that can increase the risk of a cholera outbreak without being able to predict that outbreak. So it's a matter of in the context of the dissection of operationalizing all these different factors. I completely agree with you that social determinants of health play an important role. And the question is then, how how do you put them all together and make something that's actually user friendly and usable? And on the first question, so please correct me if I And on the first question, so please correct me if I misunderstood. But so in the context of, of cholera, anticipation does not mean, as I mentioned in the beginning, predicting the outbreak. It's predicting or predicting the first case, it's predicting an outbreak of a certain size so that we can get ahead of the curve and flatten the curve. And so there's always this sort of debate, what is early action and anticipatory action? And in this case, we define this tutorial action with these three buckets that I talked about. And we do come in much sooner than we normally would have, based on the clear signal that we've set. And then it's a matter of definition where we put that threshold and that signal. Does that answer your questions somewhat? Sorry. Jose, I don't know if you wanted to add anything.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you answered a lot of parts of my questions, I think. But in my opinion, I think if we aims to the early warning, we just detect the signals and verify the signals to our partners and let them to think about what they can do for the potential of the power for the outbreaks. And if we need to do some more further I mean, projection for the, for the actions for the response. So that we need, maybe, in my opinion, I think we needed to do more to do further. Some, sometimes it's maybe we have to concern more about the severity of the diseases and the number of the diseases of the attacks and also, as you mentioned, the number of death and also the transmission, something like that. So that will be a help us to make more clear and exact how can we respond to that and also how can we mobilize and coordinate resources, allocation, allocate this kind of resources and what kind of a consulting we need to coordinate for our partnership to react, to respond to the potential situation in the near future. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, I mean, completely agree. And I mean, this is a pilot, but this is the first time we're doing this. And so we're going to look at the activities, how do they unfold, what we can, we learn from this together, obviously, with the main implementing partners, WHO and UNICEF. So, yeah, thanks for that. But I think Gwen wanted to.
Yeah, thanks. I'm looking at the interesting question from Patrick in the chat. And it's a kind of a multi-part question, so I'll break it up into a couple of different parts of the answers. But one, I mean, just to read this out, it's recent anticipatory action programs in the Philippines failed to trigger because typhoons evolved much faster than anticipated. And so one gap is dead on the human terrain, which is not available at the frequency and granularity of climate data. I think this also points to, and one of the shortcomings of trying to do data-based things in a world in which, let's say, the cycles, the cycle is shortening for things to be changing in a dramatic way. And, and I think we need to be making sure that we're balancing this kind of incredible data sets and input with data with some of the kind of human minds that we have around the table here to be balancing and understanding that in a world that is changing very quickly, using data from the past has its limitations and that we may need to actually be, you know, identifying triggers that are, are more sensitive or identifying actions that seem like overkill and based on triggers. And I think there's an element of kind of playing, playing with this as we sort of figure it out because we know that backwards-looking data, when it comes to meteorological events, when it comes to a lot of the sort of climate-related elements is, is always out of date. It becomes more and more out of date every year as the sort of feedback cycles of climate change accelerate. And you also have this question around, you know, sort of parallels with outbreak anticipatory action and the transfer to the community and involvement of community health workers. I can speak certainly for Red Cross, Red Crescent, that it is inherently linked to the activities of volunteers from the Red Cross and Red Crescent in their own communities. And, and those, those activities are also very much connected into local authorities. So there is always work to be done in terms of that relationship and making sure that, you know, for example, if Red Cross or Red Crescent volunteers are picking up early cases of disease through community-based surveillance or other mechanisms, and those, those cases are investigated not by ourselves, but by local health authorities and making sure that that kicks over into action, not just by us, but by other partners as well, including the local authorities. And but for us, at least, the way that we're approaching this is very much based on community action by people who are in those affected communities. And I think that there's quite a lot of work to look at, you know, both at the local connection level, which is something that we can not control, but certainly influence. And but I think there's a lot to be looked at for those of us who are around the table as global actors to identify how do you move from the local early action, you know, to, to start to scale up to global early action as well? If we look at some of the cholera outbreaks that have occurred in the past year or so, we have very consistently been relatively slow to respond. And part of that, part of that was challenges with just a lot of epidemics in the same, at the same time, challenges with availability of resources. But I think that there's a conversation to be had around, you know, if we're all collectively moving towards this earlier action, anticipatory action, you know, however we're framing it, how do we know then at what point that early action or anticipatory action needs reinforcement from the global community and making sure that that happens earlier than it has been happening as well?
And I know we're out of time, so I'll just kind of come in very quickly to say I completely agree with the points that were made with you, Anis, and Gwen. And I think what we are saying is that we need to improve and invest again in data analytics as well. So better data, more granular data, more frequently updated, that is more easily accessible and also to promote and encourage the development of models so that we can improve not only the types of scenarios under which we might be able to take anticipatory action, but that more people can do it in a more timely manner. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk today. I know we're out of time, but over to you, Simone.
Thanks, everyone. Yeah, we, we see that we questioned Ian. I saw that your questions didn't get answered as well, so we will send it out. If, if there's a couple of questions that didn't get answered, thanks for that suggestion. We'll make sure that we get those replies via email about any, any questions that were met. I think you again, everybody, for the great call and super interesting presentations and discussion. And we will see everybody in two weeks and wishing you all a wonderful weekend. And we will, of course, post this as always, it will go on YouTube, so you can hand it out, share it out, email it out with all of, all of your colleagues, and we will be in two weeks time. Have a good weekend. Take care.
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.